We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss four tenure recommendations, a student matter, and a contractual matter. If we could put a stamp of the pledgeable agents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Robert Tejan.
Ewan McNeigh.
Catherine Natto.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Will O'Beir.
John Wallston.
John McPhillips.
Do we have any PEG students visiting us tonight? Welcome. Your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock or until when the meeting is over, whichever one comes first. And we do have sign out sheets that are scattered around the table up here, so make sure that you sign out on one of these sheets before you leave, so that you get credit for being here. First is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November 1st, 2023, regular board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And three, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. First, I'd like to ask John McPhillips to do a tax collection update. Everyone turn their head.
Thank you. Can you just pull it up just a little bit? Thank you. So around this time of year, I always just want to give the board an update on where the district is in terms of overall tax collection. You may recall that the district collects taxes beginning from September 1st to usually September 30th. This year was October 2nd, only because of the way the weekend fell on September 30th. From that time period, taxes can be collected and received penalty free. Between the period of October 1st to October 31st, the district still can collect taxes, but it needs to be include a 2% penalty fee on top of the original base amount. So, the table in front of you represents the payment method or mechanism by which taxes were paid, as well as the number of parcels associated with that payment. So overall, the district's original warrant was roughly $72.2 million. We had a correction of the assessment roll and tax levy associated with four parcels in New Scotland, associated with the pilot agreement, that decreased the available levy by roughly $43,000. But overall, we collected almost 98% of the total tax warrant and roughly 97% of the overall parcels. Roughly $1,467,000 remains presently uncollected. As of November 15th, the district sends to the Albany County Department of Finance a file that contains those parcels that have not paid their taxes for collection by the district. I'm sorry, by the county. So the district is in an uncomfortable spot right now, because we are still receiving, hey, I forgot to pay my taxes, I got buried underneath the other mail, can I come in? And we're actually in a position now by law that we can't actually collect and receive taxes. So, right now, they're in the hands of Albany County for collection up until the release of the Town and County Property Tax Bill in January, where they get relevied, and individuals can make their payment for those taxes as part of their Town and County Tax Bill. The district has always made whole for any uncollectible taxes. We do get paid on or about April 1st of every year, so that $1,467 figure will come back to the district on or about April 1st of 2024. So, in terms of comparison, the numbers are almost spot on in terms of where they were last year. The percentage points vary by, you know, the tenths of percentage points, but overall, this is a snapshot of where we're at.
Thanks, John. Anyone have questions?
Was the chargeback taken? And is that chargeback?
For those individuals that wrote a check, but there were not sufficient funds in the checking account, so we, does it, so, a lot of thanks go to really Michelle Curtis in the business office and Tom Morton. They actually process all 11,000 of those tax bills by hand, in some way, shape, or form. Whether they come into electronic payments through escrow, whether they come into the Dropbox here, whether they come into the Pioneer Banks, all of those individual payments are processed by hand. So, there's times where we get just, you know, unfortunate errors. There were insufficient funds, or, you know, the mortgage check cleared before the direct deposit went in. We have instances where people forget to sign their check, or the number on the check doesn't match the actual where you write out the amount. So all those have to be manually processed back to the actual individual or residence or business that made that tax payment. So, we sometimes run into this issue where we find the error after the September 30th date, or the October 31st date, which means we either have to send the payment back and advise that we can accept payment, but now it has to include the 2% penalty fee, or because it was received after October 31st, it's now in the hands of Albany County for collection.
Thanks, John. The next thing I want to just, some of you may have seen that the Blue Ribbon Commission, which was a group organized by State Ed, this week came out with recommendations in regards to graduation requirements. So there are recommendations at this point, but essentially, one of the big changes was there's currently three types of diplomas: the Regents diploma, Regents with advanced designation, and a local diploma. Their recommendation is to replace the three diploma types with one, and have the option to add seals and endorsements as part of the diploma process. Three of the recommendations also suggest that the Regents consider changing the current requirements that students pass four or five Regents exams in order to receive a high school diploma in favor of some performance-based assessments. So those would include things such as reducing or modifying diploma assessment requirements, create state-developed rubrics for performance-based assessments, create more specific tailored graduation requirements to address unique circumstances of certain groups of students. There were a total of 12 overall recommendations, and there is a presentation available online. At this point, the recommendations and the State Education Department will then take the lead on implementing any of those changes at this point. So the commission's work is kind of done. So I just wanted to update the board. I'm sure we'll be getting further guidance in regards to that, but that were...
They're not recommending getting rid of Regents entirely?
No. Just more options and flexibility. In the last part of my report, I wanted to introduce Claire Grodin. She's sitting in the front. We are contracting with Bosse's for our Food Service Director position, and we interviewed, and Claire is the successful candidate, so I wanted her to be here tonight to, so you could all meet her, and I don't know Claire, if you want to say a few words at all?
Yeah.
If you, if you...
Oh, sorry, you have to go to the mic.
Do you have to come to the microphone? Sorry.
Hi, everyone. I'm really looking forward to leading the Food Service Department here at Bethlehem and being part of this community. So, thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you. I'm welcome.
Welcome.
And that's my report, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions for Jody? Next up is the board report, and I just had a couple things I wanted to mention. One was that I think everyone probably got an invitation for tickets in their email, but the performance of Clu at the high school is coming up on the weekend of December 9th, and I encourage everybody to attend, because all the performances are always perfect. And then the other thing I wanted just to remind people about, that this coming Saturday, November 18th, is Recycling Day in the town, and one of the things that is being collected is donations for the BCMS Wellness Room. So it's not just about recycling. They are also collecting certain clothing and new hygiene products. So there is information, if you look in the information that's gone out about Recycling Day, it's online. From the town? It was, I think, I think it, I saw it both from the town and the district.
It came up.
I've seen it in many...
It went on Parent Square, correct?
I think it went out on Parent Square, but take a look, because that was a, sort of like an extra thing, in addition to getting your paper shredded, or whatever it is that happens.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else they wanted to share? Ewan?
One small thing, it's also the Area Allstate this Saturday, so I know a bunch of kids from the high school are taking half of Friday to try and very rapidly learn three difficult pieces, and then taking Saturday to learn the rest and play them, so everyone's free. It's at Proctors on Saturday, I think 5:00 PM or so, but it's going to be a great concert.
Next up are our student reports. Do we have anyone from the Student Senate here tonight? I don't see anybody. Do we have anyone from middle school? Student council? Do you need to lower the microphone a little bit? There you go.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Macy Young, and...
I'm Maxi Lee.
Without further ado, let's get into what's going on at the middle school.
So, informational meetings for the winter sports season are this week, and practices and tryouts will be next week.
We also have an event that is a coat drive, and we, and that ends next week for the families that are needy, and, yeah.
We have a turkey trot this Friday, and we hope to have as many students as possible to run in it, and parents may also come and watch.
Next, we have No Shave November is ongoing, and this is to help fight cancer and provide support. The middle school has about a dozen staff participating, and one, about like 11 boys, but one girl, which is Ms. McElveen, our Spanish teacher.
Saturday is an America Recycles Day at the middle school from 10 to 1. Families from the town may bring in textiles, bicycles, paper for shredding, and books. The middle school ReThred Student Store is also looking for gently-used clothing that can be donated to families in need and students.
Next, we have the Last Week to Order a Character T-shirt, and the kids get their free t-shirt, because they took a survey during Home Base, but the parents are welcome to buy one.
The last quarter ended Friday, and report cards will be posted this Friday.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. And next up are our presentations this evening, and first, we are having a presentation from the BCHS Counseling Department. So if you guys want to come on up?
Thank you for having us here tonight. I appreciate it. David Dolmell, High School Principal. More importantly, I'd like to thank the staff that's here to help me tonight. Mr. Darnell Douglas, one of our school counselors, Ms. Kristin Connor, our K-12 counseling supervisor, and our awesome students who have given up their time tonight. They all work, and they're busy, so I appreciate it. Sophie Berlin, Connor Salisbury, and Matt Choppy, who will be up here in a little while. Before I hand it over to Kristin, I'd just like to say that our Counseling Department has grown tremendously in the time that I've been here, and I'm very proud of that, to meet the needs of the students in the building. Many will be discussed in the presentation, but it would be really impossible to talk about the entirety of what the Counseling Department does every day. A day in the life of a counselor is unpredictable, could be helping a student in crisis, pushing into a classroom for a lesson, providing training to staff, or assisting with academic support, to name a few. With all these unpredictable events, there is a constant and consistent job in our Counseling Department where our staff excels, and that's post-secondary planning and preparation. Tonight, we'll discuss many of these programs, and opportunities critical to this process and the success of our students. I'd now like to thank and introduce Ms. Kristin Connor, our K-12 counseling supervisor.
Hi. Good evening. Good to see you. It's been a year since I've been up here. I think every year, we do something different. So this year, the focus is the high school and our college process and our career and tech ed offerings. If we can get our little handy-dandy. So Dave mentioned that we've grown in size. I just want to give you a snapshot. Over the course of the eight years that I've been here, we have looked at a number of different ways to manage our caseloads. This year, we decided to go back to 9 through 12. So every high school counselor will meet with students in grades 9 through 12. In previous years, we had two dedicated ninth-grade counselors, and we had five dedicated 10 through 12 counselors. But what we found is when students are transitioning from the middle school to the high school, and then again to somebody new, some of the continuity was just lost. So we decided, let's get back to the 9 through 12 model. We've got some familiar faces up there, and we also have a brand-new counselor, Ryan Donlin, who is new this fall and replaced a counselor who has left to go on for a new professional administrative position. So with the six folks that are up here, they all have caseloads assigned to them, they all work with the students in grades 9 through 12, and really, their role is to help advocate for students in the realms of academic, social, and emotional concerns and performance. We're fortunate to have supportive staff with two school social workers, a high school student assistance counselor, a crisis interventionist who's new this year, and Liz Colletune, who was formerly in our department, is now the coordinator for our B program. So having them help support our students, our school counselors are able to really perform the task, which is to provide that academic, social, and emotional counseling. You know, when we discussed this evening's program, we were trying to decide, well, which path do we take? We could spend all night on college admissions, right? We could spend all night on the college admissions landscape, but ultimately, what we recognize is that we want to hear from the students, you know, and their experiences. So I'm only going to spend just a few minutes on this process, because I really want to get to what the students have to offer, because it's their experiences that really, that matter most. And so when it comes to post-secondary programming, I would say that Bethlehem has a very rich offering. So we offer programs starting with our freshman year, so orientation, just having students adjust to the high school. We kind of walk them through the process. We've got orientation, new student orientation, and then we start with the course selection process. So we have them adjust to the high school, we talk about what courses do you want to take next year, and that's for every grade level. Then we offer what we call our Jump Start program, and that's for freshman and sophomore students, parents, and guardians. We offer that because every family is going to have a very different path. And so there are some students who are ready to discuss college and post-secondary plans when they're freshmen, and some aren't ready until they graduate. And so we want to start the offerings early. So Jump Start is actually in March. We always have a Director of Admission come to present and just kind of run through the whole process with everybody, kind of to ease a little bit of anxiety, and to just say, hey, here are the next steps that you should be looking forward to. Sophomore year is a little bit more of that adjustment phase. We do talk more about careers. We have a new platform called SCORE, S-C-O-I-R, that has replaced Naviance. So it does basically the same features, houses all of our transcripts, sends it to colleges and universities, but we also have enhanced features now that we can pull from that we never had with Naviance, such as the career planning. So that's really our sophomore programming. Junior year is really when we ramp things up, right? So junior year, we have students come in for our college fair that we host in the fall, so we often do one in the fall and one in the spring. And then we couple that with our junior night. We have a Director of Admission come to talk about the essay, talk about the whole process, and then we invited senior families to come in afterwards, so that they could also experience the college fair for any student who hadn't come in the previous spring during their junior year. So, once that ends, we kind of kick off our junior programming. Just this past week, our entire junior class came down to the Counseling Center in the classroom, and we ran activities in classrooms, in the classroom setting, that pertained to the whole admission process. So for, for example, we had a GPA admissions game. So students stood at the front of the room with the GPA, and we had criteria, and they had to basically decide who was going to get in based on that GPA and the criteria that the students that were in the class were giving them. So, we went from that activity to a case study, and we had two students who were either going to be admitted, denied, or waitlisted to Eagle University. So students had to conference in multiple settings to decide, you know, where were they going to be admitted, denied, and waitlisted. So really great participation, very involved conversations, some got even a little contentious about who was admitting who, and then afterwards, they'd meet with their counselors to talk about the next steps. Junior conferences happen with every single one of our students. That's an opportunity for individual students to work with their counselor to talk about the next steps, because again, everyone has a different path. And then from there, we go zero to 90, and I'm not joking when I say that. The end of the summer, prior to senior year, we offer our College Planning Night. We offer our College Planning Program, where students meet with just their counselor to talk about the process. We have application boot camp, they meet with their individual counselor again. We offer sessions in the Counseling Center for anyone who needs more assistance. So, we really take the time, even though they're not just college advisors, we take the time to help navigate the process. So I think that's what's really important. We like to finish senior year with a Financial Aid Night, because again, you're looking at, you know, location, size, programming, and really the cost to attend a four-year school. We've got 73% of our students attend a four-year school, 13% a two-year school, and 12% go on to military, trade, and technical schools. So we have a very successful graduation rate and a very successful post-secondary planning here at Bethlehem. We also like to finish senior off with our Senior Symposiums. That's new as of this year. We want to prepare students for their next stage, and so anything from life skills to how to access mental health supports on a college campus, we offer that to students and families during the day, in the morning, in the evenings. We are trying to provide outreach to everyone and anyone who, you know, is willing to come and just be part of those conversations. So that's just a snapshot, 9 through 12, and how we manage our programs. I think one of the things that's really important to note is that we had 83 college reps come to visit Bethlehem this fall, and over 507 students come into our Counseling Center in two months to visit those college reps. It's a very busy office. So it's really good to just give you that snapshot. I think, you know, what I'm missing is, yeah, we host instant admit days, we take field trips, and we bring students to go and see CTE. We bring our first-gen students to Skidmore, to U Albany. There is, we try to meet the needs of all of our students, regardless if they have a plan or not, because we want to expose them to everything that really the world has to offer, whether it's, you know, going into employment, the armed forces, or trade and technical school, or a four-year degree. So, I would love to turn it over to Darnell to start talking about CTE, but I'm always available to, you know, talk about our programming and at any time. Darnell?
All right. Thank you. All right. So I am blessed, I guess, to talk about CTE. I think sometimes we don't do, we do a disservice to some of these students. So when we talk about CTE, Career Technical Education, it's also, can be classified as VOTEC. It's also just an acronym for Bosse's. So sometimes those, all of those words are interchangeable, right? And then from the, bless you, from the slide, you can see that our students are now blessed to go to a brand-new facility. So as long as I've been working here, we were going to an older facility, it was nice, they got the best out of that situation, but now everything is top of the line at the new Albany campus, right? So, the older Salisbury didn't get to see this, but the younger Salisbury get to see this, right? All right. So why participate in CTE, right? It's really about exposure, right? We want to make sure that our kids have an opportunity to see different things. So if we have students who do not like being in the traditional classrooms where they're just sitting and the teacher's talking at them, then they get the opportunity of being more hands-on. So, they're introduced to careers at a younger age, and then some of these students may have mom and dad who are doing a career, and they want to get that experience of getting it early, and some of them use that experience to get a certificate, while also if they go on to a two-year or four-year degree. We've also had students who are really smart, and they say, okay, well, college is really expensive, so I'm going to learn a trade, and then when I get to college, I'm going to use that trade to pay for college. So that's also what some students do. There's also a lot of articulation certificates that CTE offer. So if you're in the automotive program or in the fashion program, there are colleges that will work with you to make sure that all of the skills that you're learning are CTE are now transferable. You're also learning valuable workplace environment and how to be professional at a job. So these are some of the programs that we have at CTE. As you see, we have automotive, to building trade, to carpentry, to welding. Some of our programs are very competitive, like our welding program is very competitive, our diesel program is very competitive. And so one of the questions we were asked a lot is, okay, well, who gets to be in these programs? So as Kristin said, sophomore year, we take some of the squirreliest students and say, okay, we're going to bring you over to CTE to see if this is a program that you're interested in. And we expose them to, we usually say, pick two programs that you think you want to, would be interested in. It's not guaranteed that you're going to get those programs, because it is a lottery. So we say, we're going to give you, go over there, take a field trip, and then we come back and we talk about, okay, what are your top programs that you would be interested in? Then we fill that information out, we give that to the counselors at CTE, and then they tell us who they pick, right? We don't always get to say, okay, well, this student is the best student for this program, right? If you ask one of our students, he's, his family's in welding, and he wanted to do welding, did you get into welding? He didn't get into welding, right? And we begged, borrowed, and tried to get him in there, but it didn't work out that way. So, as I said, it's a two-year program, so usually, students are going there during their junior year. So sophomore year, we introduce them, we take them on a trip. Once they, we pick, they pick who is into the program, then it's typically a two-year program. So they'll start their junior year, and we require that the students are on grade level in terms of graduation requirements. If they're not on grade level, they're automatically disqualified from the program. We also have attendance policy, so if you are not coming to your home school all of the time, it's not, it's not fair for us to now pay for you to go to CTE, which costs a lot of money, so you might not be qualified to go to the program your junior year, right? Students will earn four credits at CTE, and there usually is a component, a math, a science, and English, that is now transferable to their home school, so that way, they're still on track for graduation, right? So what I'll do is I'll now turn it over to some of our students. So we have Connor Salisbury, we'll talk about his program. So we have Connor Salisbury, we'll talk about his program.
My name's Connor Salisbury. I'm in the building trades program. I was lucky enough to get into it. At first I wasn't, but my mom fought for me, so I'm in there. Couldn't be more thankful. But, I'm in year two. My future plans are to attend Hudson Valley for construction technology and then working for a general contractor and then hopefully owning my own business, but, well, you never know. I currently work at Hannaford and then I'm just running some side jobs for myself, just carpentry, just a bunch of stuff. I've always been interested in, like, construction and as a child, I, I think I grew up watching How It's Made. And, what else? It was How It's Made and like, some like contracting shows I used to watch with my father. The courses I took at the school were woodworking and engineering, so.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys got questions or anything?
Does anyone?
Yeah, sure. Let's assume that you find a million dollars if I'm Darnell's back pocket and could change the program somehow. What would you want to change?
Um, I think more, let me think on this, this is a good question. Uh, probably, maybe like, I wish we, because the first year is kind of like, not as like, we're, now we're doing like framing, plumbing, and masonry this year, but like, I wish we did the same thing last year. I wish we got like a little bit more into like the, maybe like some other like trades in the construction world. Besides just, you know, carpentry, plumbing, and masonry, which are all great, but you know, just maybe want in-depth a little bit more on those. Any others?
Any other questions for Connor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Who's next?
Hello. I'm Sophia Berlin. I am a senior year at Bethlehem and this is my second year taking the Global Fashion Studies Program at BOSI's. And truly, I really love it. I've always known that I wanted to somewhere be in the fashion industry, like career-wise and in college, because I was never really interested in anything else. But I really would not have had half of the doors open for me if I hadn't taken this course. Even this past couple months, I've been doing an internship at Capital Rep Theaters for costume design, which is what I'm interested in pursuing. And I would not have gotten that if I wasn't introduced into this course. It's really opened up like a world of knowledge that has given me the confidence to go into college. Because when you're going into a design major, you have to submit a portfolio and, and show them who you are and what skills you have. And I would not be as confident in my skills if I hadn't taken this course. My teacher is lovely, all the staff there is amazing, the facilities, really like, it provides you with all the materials that you need to succeed. And I really, I love it. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Can you describe a project that you've done?
Yeah, so, through the internship, the women that we worked with there and my teacher, they collaborated. So, I would go onsite for a week and then I would work on something during class for a couple weeks. And what I just worked on was a men's eighteen-seventies-inspired vest. So they would provide, like, the kind of character that they wanted and any specific details, like stitching that they wanted to see. And then I take, me and two other classmates that did it, we take our designs and then we construct it in class and then we go back to them in December and we present what we made.
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you doing all the stitching and all of that as well?
Yes, yes. So for that specific project, we brought them our design boards and our sketches. They provided a pattern and then we manipulated it based on our designs. We take that pattern back to class and they had provided fabric. And then, you can see in that photo, I'm sketching out the pattern. And then we sew it all in class. She has all the sewing machines, sergers, everything. And then, yeah.
That sounds great. You in?
You seem very happy.
I am!
What's bad about this? Is there anything bad about this?
There's nothing bad about it. I wish, I wish that there were more opportunities for all my students. I have a big class and I have one teacher, she has an assistant, but it was just me and two other students who got to do this internship and then there are other work-based learning opportunities that you, the other students get to go on. But I was picked for this internship because of my interest in costume design specifically and I wish there were more specific opportunities for the rest of my class that they could pursue. Any others?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. A question. How, how did you find out about this program? Is this something a counselor mentioned to you that you might be interested in or did you already know about it?
Yeah. So there is, there was an elective here at Bethlehem that you could take, a fashion elective that I took in sophomore year. And Mr. Douglas introduced to me this BOSI's program that they have. And then I, I decided it was something I was interested in. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm Matt Choppie. This is my second year at CTE. So my future plans, I'd like to go to Hudson Valley for maybe some business courses or take welding since I didn't get to go to that. And hopefully take over my family's welding business one day. So hopefully my parents can retire. I currently work at M K Greenhouses in Selkirk, but every chance that I get, I work with my dad at our welding business and try and learn as much as a trade as I can, just so when I step into it when I get older, I have as much knowledge behind it. I became interested in BOSI because I've always, always been interested in the trades and I always found it very interesting, like, fun to get hands-on. I never liked sitting, like, in a classroom. So, when my parents told me about it and older friends told me about it, I knew that's something that I wanted to do. And, I feel like it's, the school needs to advertise it more. They don't advertise it to people enough. And a lot of kids don't want to sit behind a classroom or behind a teacher and just stare at a screen all day. They don't like that. That's something I never liked. I feel like the classes there are very good, but some of them, it's, it's kind of hard because some of the kids have, let's say, no skill level of the trade that they're getting into and some of them have a very high skill level getting into it. So the teacher has a very hard time figuring out where they can start from, because some kids know a lot more than others, so they don't know what to base, like, to start from. But, it's a very, it's a very good program. Any questions?
So I'm just wondering, like, I could have accessed your classmates as well, but what, what does a day look like? Are you going straight to, are you going straight to BOSI's? Are you coming here for a little while? Is that heading over? How does it work?
So you can either go in the morning, which is, you come here, you get on the bus that takes you right over to BOSI's, you come back around ten-thirty and take the rest of the classes that you need. Or you come here at seven-thirty or whenever you need to get here and take your classes that you need to take. And then you go to BOSI's in the afternoon and you get back at around like two o'clock.
Oh, that's cool. So you still get to hang out with your friends? You still get to do all that and you get to take these classes?
Yep. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. If our students who came, would you guys be interested in a special pin? I'm going to come over and give you one.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's nothing squirrely about these three. They're awesome students.
Are, are students within IEP able to do both? Are you able to have time to support them in that?
Yes. Correct. Yep.
I had a question about availability. It sounds like, which is what I thought was the case. Is it only a thing you can take, you know, this whole program for two years? It's less possible to go take a class in welding or a class in plumbing? Is that a possibility?
No.
Why? What, how could we facilitate that? So, my own child, right, took a class in theater tech, basically. And we had to jump through like a million hoops and drive them both ways while on jazz. It just seems like it was a really amazing opportunity for him that more kids should have. How can we help facilitate that?
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's a, that's a great question. As I talked to the students here when we were preparing, that's one of the things I, I talked to them about, how I would like to continue to promote as much of these opportunities or as many of these opportunities as possible for students, whether it's internally or externally. And we're, as a counseling department, we're always looking for those opportunities to expand.
So what are the obstacles? If somebody wants to, you know, stay in the normal high school program?
So it's, it's time of day, it's fitting it into the schedule, transportation, you know, program availability, cost, affiliations, whether it's.
And also, CTE doesn't offer just to go and take a standalone class. It's a program. And many of the programs lead to a certification or, as some of the students had certifications. So, it's not an option that CTE offers as a standalone class. It's actually a program, which is why they get four credits for it.
But I noticed, I mean, some of the PCHS courses, they have them as well.
Sure. Yeah, we have some that, that, to their point, you know, maybe leads them into that or is an introduction to it. We have some culinary classes, which if kids maybe want to go into the culinary program, they might take that first. But the programs at CTE are programs, not just a standalone course.
Like, so if you took, you took fashion design, right, here? So she took a fashion design course here. So internally, we do have some exposure. Expanding upon that would be great. It's just, you know, run classes, you have to have, you know, student interest numbers, so that's involved with that, those decisions.
One of the other pieces, just so the board is aware, and, you know, we talked about, if you get into a program, and I think this is part due to the new facilities, if you haven't seen them, the facilities are spectacular there. But there is a long waiting list of students trying to get into certain programs. And we had students who I think were interested in, did not get in, every school district did. So that's one of the challenges. I know that BOSI's is looking to, on the current campus, they have another area facility to add some additional space for some of their more popular programs to try and meet the demand, but the demand is higher than what they can fulfill. And they also are limited by the staffing. You know, who can they get to staff the programs as well and make sure that the kids are getting a good experience?
Catherine, your question?
Um, just kind of building off of this, I wonder, on the, on the trade sides of things, building trades and, and welding and whatnot, have we ever partnered with, with local unions to provide training?
That's what, that's what BOSI's does.
I guess I was, I was kind of thinking, yeah, I guess I'd love to, I'd love to understand or explore that, explore it further, because it would be interesting to see what, what school-based options might exist, if that's, if that's a path to go down.
I think the attraction with BOSI's in career and technical ed is, they have a large pool of students, you know, a, a union perhaps is going to be more interested in partnering with them than an individual school district who might only have a few kids interested in that program.
Right, right.
That's the value of having a regional career technical ed program.
Right.
They're just struggling to be able to offer it to as many kids that are interested in it, which I think is great, but they are looking to add some additional programs there.
And then, this might be a question better for BOSI's than other, than folks here. Are they looking at any, anything in solar, wind, in the renewables? The feds are pumping a ton of money into this right now as a state for training, career training and all that. And I'm just wondering if we're starting to see that filter the high school?
I don't know, maybe in the electrical program, they maybe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that, that would make sense that they might introduce that obviously.
Darnell, do you know?
Trying to leave.
Trying to get out.
Back in. Yes, they have talked about, so, because I'm the counselor for CTE, every December we go down, I go there and we talk about different programs. So they are talking about renewable energy programs. It's really just, how many students are interested in, in these particular programs? Because they've had programs in the, in the past that have, came out with a great concept, but if, it's died out because they didn't have enough interest, right? And back to your original question about, like, can we just offer like a one-off class? It really depends on the, the amount of students that are interested in that program. So, like, I was just talking to the young men over there and they would love to have a welding program like freshman year, but it comes down to, are they going to have twenty students that are interested in welding or like two students that's interested in welding? So then, who would run it, right? So, yeah.
And I guess until we offer the class, how do you know who's interested?
Great point.
It's a chicken and egg problem, right?
Any other questions?
One more. You and me, one more.
Don't forget your hat.
You told us there's a lottery and a waiting list for this stuff. What are the numbers we're looking at? How many folks are we sending to BOSI's this year? How many do we have to go?
Oh, man, I'm not leaving home, huh? Alright, I'm just joking. So, last year, I think that that's the most we had. We had probably close to seventy to eighty students who was interested in going to BOSI's, CTE. And typically in the past, we were able to send more students. We, I think we always maxed out around forty to forty-five students. And the reason why we, we couldn't send more students is, spoiler alert, Shaker started sending more students to CTE. So then, everyone's cap got smaller and smaller and smaller. So, if you have a really strong, like, we have really strong students who are interested in the program or who wants to be specifically interested in the program, we can't always guarantee that they're going to get that program. So, that they have to pick, okay, well, we have to send them the students who are, one, on grade level and then two, in terms of attendance. So that eighty now is reduced to, let's say, seventy kids. And then now, from those seventy kids, they have to pick from that.
And that's due to BOSI's capacity?
Correct. That's not, that's not because we don't want to send all seventy kids, yeah.
And is it that we can't send them all or is it that they may not be able to get into their top choice program?
It's both. It's, one, they can't, they won't be able to get in their top choice program and two, there's not enough, there's not enough room. So for example, last year, I think I had six, six students that wanted to be specifically in welding and we only got, I think, two or three spots, right? So, now that six can't do welding, so now, if I, if I remember correctly, I think three got into welding and then the next three had to pick a different program. And of those three, two got into the pro, the second program that they wanted and the one didn't. So the one, I think he had to pick a different program, so he went from his top one to his second one to his third option and that's what happened.
And sometimes they only want one option.
Correct, so they might not go.
Of course, yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. A problem.
And to you also, Kristen, for presenting. And a special thank you to our three student guests. And you're welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, you may also feel free to do that. We have a second presentation this evening and that is our transportation update and walking distances discussion. So I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you. Before we start, I want to just give a special thanks to the transportation team for pulling some of the information together. And Dr. Hurst for pulling the map components together. I'm thinking he dabbles in graphic design on the side, so he was really helpful with that, so thank you. We're starting some of these presentations almost as a lead-up or stepping off point for the budget process coming up. So, things have not significantly changed in terms of transportation and the challenges that the transportation department is currently facing this year compared to last year. So I wanted to first start off with a couple of pieces of demographic information. So, this first slide sort of represents the budgeted positions versus the filled positions within the transportation department. This, I started this presentation last week and Ellen reminded me that one of those supervisor positions is presently vacant, seeing that she was that supervisor at the time. So, we're actively recruiting for a replacement supervisor. Three supervisors, three dispatchers, eight mechanics, all of which are currently filled. For the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process, there are seventy budgeted positions for the driver position, fifty of which, at the time the presentation was put together, are filled. That may have upticked by, by a couple, but more or less fifty positions filled. For the bus attendance. 50 positions filled. For the bus attendants, we are budgeted at 30 positions. Currently 20 positions are filled. I do want to note that for the bus attendants, we do have a, the appropriate number of filled bus attendants for the number of IAPs that are required. And we have a number of substitute drivers and substitute attendants. The, the challenge that the transportation department deals on a daily basis is while we have enough filled positions for present routes, that's all on paper. Life gets in the way. Medical appointments, you're, you're not feeling well, there's a death in the family, personal leaves, vacation leaves, those all impact the numbers that you're seeing. So while we have enough number of drivers for the 53 routes that we have, on any given week, we're actually operationally have much less than that. What does that mean? So for, for bus drivers, you'll see that if, if there's a call-in of, of five drivers, because all drivers and staff outside of attendance require a CDL to be employed, we're pulling from those respective titles to fill in routes. So there's times where the administration and bus garage are empty because we pulled mechanics, we pulled dispatchers, we pulled supervisors in certain instances to, to complete a route. So they understand it comes with the job, they do it willingly, they do it graciously, they do it well. But there's times where, if you're pulling mechanics, what does that mean? You're not getting DOT inspections done. Regular maintenance has to be put, put to the wayside. So that's a challenge there. In terms of driver demographics, this breaks it out in terms of age cohort. So we have two individuals that are aged 39 and younger, 17 drivers between the ages of 40 and 54, and roughly 31 drivers aged 55 and older. So 60% of the driver workforce are either retirement eligible or have retired already. So that, that create in and of itself its own challenge for transportation, for the transportation team to, to field a roster of drivers for routes. The district has been aware of, of the challenge. It's not just a Bethlehem district issue, it's a national issue, it's a capital region issue. We've tried to make strides to make sure that we can get the number of drivers in attendance needed for, for daily routes and transportation. We have a leading salary rate in the capital district area. We have in our present contract, a guaranteed minimum of six hours per day to make sure that those drivers that are looking to be benefit eligible are benefit eligible. An attractive benefit package including enrollment in the state retirement system, quality medical and pharmaceutical coverage. We've included a $1,000 retention bonus after 10 months of continuous district service, a $600 recruitment bonus, and all training and certification for commercial driver license or your CDLs are provided and paid for by the district. So we've done as much, I think, as we possibly can to be attractive and competitive in the marketplace.
One comment. I noticed when I was doing my, you know, onboarding training, there were three other district reps. Basically, they weren't really complaining, they were kind of whining. The Bethlehem was paying more and so they were doing the training for their drivers and they were coming to work for us. So we're clearly an attractive place to work.
The, the challenge is, is that the pool is just a, a limited-
Yeah.
-pool of available candidates. And we're all competing. Districts, your, your outside private entities are, are competing all, all for the, the same small pool of, of resources. We, I, I touched upon this a little bit briefly earlier in terms of the impact of the staffing shortage. Staffing challenges on covering day-to-day routes. Your illnesses, calls, leave-ins, deaths in families, all have an operational impact. Because we only have 50 or so drivers, that leads to longer driving and longer bus routes for, for students. And as a result, we're seeing fuller buses. We're at, in, in some cases, we have 60 plus, you know, those 70 pass, those large buses can only fit 70 kids. And we're close to some of those, 69 on some of them. You add a trombone and a panorama project and things get awfully, you know, tight awfully fast. So some of the anecdotal information we're receiving is with more kids, drivers are seeing more disciplinary behavioral issues. Crowded bus, kids, you know, happy to, to get home, driver has to stop on the side of the road, calm everyone down two, three times on the trip. That'll all lead to longer rides, driver stress and, and stress, stress for kids. So the current walking, so to, to address some of the, the challenges that we're experiencing, we are starting to socialize the concept of what can we do within our realm operationally to, to address the shortage and the challenges associated with that shortage. And we were looking at walking distances and changes in those walking distances. Currently, the walk distance for the elementary schools is .1 or a tenth of a mile. And you can see by elementary school, those eligible students that live within that tenth of a mile and would have that walking distance. And if we sort of look concentrically out of that tenth of a mile and increase it to a half mile or three quarters of a mile or a mile, you can see the student impact, the route impact, and what that roughly translates into the decrease in number of buses. So at a half mile, you have roughly a change in ridership total amongst the elementary schools of 78 kids impacting seven routes, which gets you, you know, roughly a one-plus-one bus. I, you gotta assume roughly 60 kids to a large bus. Does, the math doesn't work out perfectly. It just, it, it's for conversational purposes. At three quarters of a mile, you're looking at 171 kids decreasing ridership impacting 13 routes with a decrease in two-plus buses. The mile threshold is really what's key here, at least in the elementary school, because you, you're ga, you're gaining a larger catchment area resulting in 330 students, resulting in five-plus buses and 14 routes impacted. The elementary school is really the linchpin here, only because the ridership at the elementary school is so much higher compared to the middle school and high school. You get some benefit from changing just middle school and high school, but the real impact is really on the elementary school.
Are there limits here set by the state, right? How, what these distances are allowed to be?
There is a maximum distance set by the state.
Maybe if we can just hold that until we'll let you finish your presentation and then we'll come back to that.
Thank you. Same sort of graphic for, for the middle school and high school, 960 kids eligible currently at a half mile, which is the current rate. If we were to increase that to, to a mile, it would change 81 students for a one-plus-one, one-plus bus. And the same for the high school, gets you three buses with a change in 176 kids at the high school. So that's the graphic in terms of the number of buses. Now, what's not taken into consideration, it's a closed system. So while you may actually will take out a mile for the elementary school, while you may be able to decrease five or six buses, what does that translate to, to the elementary student body? It may result in some students resulting in no change at all because their bus routes are just the way their bus routes will look like. For those that are currently on a shorter route, you know, let's say a 15 or a 20-minute route, because we have to more or less unpack the entire bus route for the entire district and reformulate it based on that decrease of buses, some kids with a shorter present ride may have a longer ride as a result, or vice versa. Those with a longer ride may ha, may have a shorter ride. So it's not necessarily a win-win-win for all situations. It's just trying to accommodate our current ridership needs with the available staffing.
John, I'm, I'm sorry, just so I understand what the numbers mean. These are snapshot in time eligible today?
That's correct.
Is it eligible and riding the bus? Or is this just students that opted into riding the bus?
There were two numbers. One is the eligible number of students and then the actual riders. It didn't vary much. The, the second column was the actual riders.
Currently, currently riding.
So, so for the student body today, I mean, it's only an average because then it would be, next year it could be, you know, totally different.
Totally different.
So it does, it does change from year to year. We saw an increased ridership on the elementary school this year compared to last and maybe more next year, maybe less. I can only really work with the ridership we have now.
When we, when we looked at this recent though, compared to when we looked at this a couple of years ago, the numbers were fairly consistent. They may have varied a little bit, but overall-
Three or four students per school, I think it wasn't significant.
All right, that's helpful. I'm sorry.
The maps, though, may change that we get into because, again, it's all based on where the ridership lives for, for any particular school district. So this is where Dave's work really came in handy. We, we pulled in the catchment zones by each school. And again, that, this isn't, this isn't fine-tuned yet because there's a lot to go into this if we were to actually implement this. So for Eagle Elementary, the green represents what the catchment zone would look like at a half mile. Those streets within that green zone would be walking to school. You go to three quarters of a mile, obviously you get a little bit bigger. At a mile, and that, this touches upon my earlier point, it's just, it grabs so much more geographical area for each school district in terms of streets. And I do have, so there's the three sort of layered. So you can sort of see almost like a bullseye going out, those impacted streets and neighborhoods where if the board selected any one of those walking distance miles, those areas that would be impacted. Now, what we tried to take into consideration, you really can't do a, a, you know, a circle for a number of reasons. A, you have safety zones in terms of where kids, where would it be safe for kids to, to cross. You can see the Delmar bypass there. That, that's a factor. And because the district, the elementary school boundaries are such, if you didn't circle, you'd be grabbing multiple boundaries for, for any couple of schools. So that, so that's a geographical representation for Eagle. This is Elsmere at a half mile, at three quarters, and at a mile. Overlay for all three. Glenmont, because of its location is the one school that does not, comparative to the other elementary schools, does not get a, a significant increase in ridership. You can't necessarily piecemeal which, you know, we're going to do this for a half mile for, for this school and, you know, a mile for this school. You, you, you need to sort of keep it uniformed. And it's really just based on the geographical footprint of, of Glenmont. That's at a half mile, that's at three quarters, and that's at a mile. Overlay between the three. Hammer Grove, just again, because of its location in the, the heart of Old Delmar, you really start capturing a lot of ridership because of just the, the tight knit community there as well as the, the closeness of, of the streets. Half mile, three quarters of a mile, and a mile overlaid. Slingerland, same, half, three quarters and a mile. There's the overlay there. And then we have similar maps for the middle school. The middle school, we're not do, we were doing a mile and a mile and a half. I'm sorry, half mile and mile. And then the high school. Was a mile and a mile and a half. Overlay there. So there was a question earlier in terms of what is the district authorized to, to do? So it's, it's sort of counterintuitive here a little bit in that the district can move to the maximum rate without putting a proposition to the voters for consideration, which is a mile and a-
Two and three miles-
Two and three miles.
Is what the state allows for maximum distance.
For elementary?
Elementary and then secondary is three miles. For anything under that-
Voting approval.
Requires the voter approval.
Right.
So, and I, and I think that's because in their, when it was originated, you know, many districts were just at two and three miles. And when you reduce that, there's more of a cost to the voters. So I think that's probably their rationale for why it requires a vote less than the maximum.
And, and my understanding is it needs to be, you can't pick and choose-
Correct.
-based on building.
Right.
So you have to pick one, one distance for all of elementary.
Yeah.
You can't say, okay, it'll be .5 for everywhere except for Glenmont, which will be .1.
Right. The only exception that can be made is what's identified as a safety zone or corridor or something.
So Hammer Grove, for instance, where it goes over the bypass, you could have differences?
No. That, the only, the only area in our district that met that criteria, when we looked at this before, was Glenmont. So there's very strict criteria as to what you can categorize as an exception to the distance. And that's under state ed requirements. And so what, once that meets that criteria, you could say this is excluded from the mileage. But to Holly's point, correct, you have to identify if you're going to change a distance. It has to be consistent for everyone.
And can we do, if we were to, I'm just refreshing my memory from the last time we, we discussed this. If we were to go out to voters with a, with a proposition to change the distance, can we do up to?
No. We looked at that.
Okay. And we have to be precise.
Yes, because we looked at some flexibility in the last time. Could we have a range, right? Because there were certain neighborhoods that it would be easier if we had a range, particularly when you look at some of the cul-de-sac areas. And when the attorney's researched that, the answer was no, you have to have a mileage and that's what the voters have to approve.
Hold on one second. Willow, did you have a question?
I, yeah, I just had a couple more questions.
Sure.
Trying to understand the numbers. So, understanding that there's like a bunch of nuances that changes the answer. Just if we could generalize about how many students equals a route and how many routes equals a bus, I think that would be helpful to understand.
So there's about 60 students, we figure, elementary. And it goes down to 50 for high school and middle school per bus. So what would happen is if we could knock off 68 students for a mile distance for elementary, we would, you're, you're not going to just take off five or 10 from each route. We would take up, we would take the whole catchment area and reroute it. So we're not picking up five here and five over here.
So that, that scenario would arguably take one bus out of rotation and you would scatter, okay.
Yes.
And with that, just following up on that, if we take one bus out, we're saying that's one less route.
One less driver.
Right, one less driver. Right, right. Recognizing that it wouldn't just be like, that guy's route. And we would-
Right, right. Yeah. So route, one route equals one driver?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
For this game?
Yes.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then these don't go cumulatively, right? So if we can look at, like, yes, that page, looking at Elsmere, if we did the half mile, it would save two routes, just looking at the Elsmere line or two drivers.
That's route impact, meaning that-
Right.
It affects two routes.
Two routes. Does it, is, does necessarily-
You don't losing two routes.
Decrease two routes.
Right.
Oh.
And it is cumulative, correct.
That's how many, yeah, affected by this change.
So, so two routes would be effective. And if we went for a whole mile around Elsmere, only three routes are effective? Or now we're adding the two plus the three plus the three? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. It's, it's 92, it's, it's not 92 plus 43 plus 20. It's, for a mile, it's 92 children-
And it's still only three routes?
It's only three routes.
Okay. Is there like a target that we feel like we need in terms of reduction of routes to actually accomplish a solution?
So just looking at the chart, I mean, we have two opposing forces here. You have, you know, we have presently 53 routes with roughly 52, 53 drivers on a good day. So we're a one-for-one, right? Which does not leave the district with significant flexibility for anything. Leaving for employment, you know, hospital and medical appointments, what have you. So the charts, based on the data that we have today, the, the largest impact is at one, at that one mile because it gets you five, at least five to six buses, which saves you five to six drivers.
Collectively.
Collectively, over the course of the elementary, elementary side of-
side of the, the transportation equation. And then those six will actually spill over and have benefit for the middle school and the high school.
And depending upon what the actual ridership is, you know, the, right now it says in half a mile, that's potentially one plus bus. It could be two, right? It could be on five buses in a mile, it could be four, depending on riders. There's, there's always that fluctuation. So it's the best estimate based on the numbers that we know now.
And then we have to add in the criteria, right?
Correct.
And you said something about how Glenmont really was one that can't be touched, but out of the car still.
Well, in one, in one area.
In one, oh, okay. So really the, the catchment zones that get hit heaviest are the ones who have Eagle, Elsmere, and Hammergrill mostly.
Right. And when we looked at this, I remember a couple of years ago, we realized that Hammergrill, the middle school, was a, a much bigger impact just because of the density of the students in that particular area. So could that help in offsetting, you know, some shifting of routes and drivers? Maybe.
It's really hard today to, to, to define what the actual impact is. Cause in order to tell if it's one bus or three buses for anyone, you have to reroute the entire district. You'd have to take those, those three out and they'd have to rerun routes and streets and see what you can actually get. You may be able to squeak out another bus on any one of these scenarios, or maybe it's one less because of a, of a safety corridor, or you know, you're at 72 kids and you can't put 72 kids on. So this is really just to give a visual representation of, of the concept here that to address the challenge, the board may be in a position to consider this. And to socialize it now, because we know how busy the budget process can be. We only have those couple of meetings between February and March before we have to finalize the announcement for the, for the proposition. And if this has to be on the ballot, the more conversation we can have about that leading up to the budget process helps inform transportation in terms of what the board is looking for in terms of information, helps socialize the concept to the public so we can, you know, uh, address this over the course of the budget process.
I think what, one of the things that we said we wanted to bring this was to kind of, where do we want to consider this as a possibility to, as we move forward? Because that will help Ellen and, and her staff kind of work on refining this as much as possible.
Sure. I agree. Bob had a question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess following a little bit up on what Willow was saying, and I, and I appreciate that this is sort of a conceptual thing right now. But assuming we did the whole, the biggest mile, the biggest impact, I mean, would that, do you anticipate that being a material help to, you know, to, to the, to the situation of the driver shortage? I mean, it's, you know, we, I suppose we want to make sure that the juice is worth the squeeze.
Yep. Well, I, I don't want to speak for, for, they're, you know, they're the soldiers in the street, right? I can tell you from what I've seen over the past year or so I've been here, it's been relatively static in terms of the number of active drivers we've had on for 12 months. So it's not like we're, we're necessarily ebbing and flowing in terms of drivers where we have some high points or low points. We are at 53 somewhat statically. And when we're, when we're not, operationally, we're, we're dumping the garage and nothing else is getting done.
Sure. So is your, is your point that any help is going to be a material help?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right.
But I, I, you know, I...
It's five, it's five less drivers.
Well, that's what I guess I'm...
Where you're missing 13 people or 10 people.
Sure. And I, and I appreciate again that you, you know, you're having to rejigger the, the, um, the roots, you know, based on this would, would really give you the final answer. And that hasn't been done. But what is your estimate of like the actual impact? Like how many drivers then is this going to, if we did the biggest one, do we have an estimate of, you know, how many? I mean, I, I know that we've got root impacts.
Yep. It's five, it's roughly five to six buses. Like if, if you're just taking a raw number, you're, you're decreasing student impact, with the student impact would be roughly 330. At 60 kids a bus, you're looking at five to six buses, understanding that, you know, some may have 50 kids, may, some may have 64 kids, right? So...
Right. And so then that's six, you know, assuming six less drivers, and then that way we've got a little bit of a cushion. So you're not pulling the folks out of the...
That's great. That's right.
Okay. My, my only other question is, I, I know that we talked a little bit about Glenmont and, and the fact that these safety zones and we can't just draw a circle. But is any analysis done, just aside from like, to the extent you go out either a half mile or three quarters or a mile, about the types of, you know, streets that the kids would be walking on?
Yeah, we looked at that. When we looked at this before, one of the other pieces we were also looking at was changing the start times. And we were looking to change the start times where elementary started first, if you remember, so we could get the high school back to the later start time. And that was, I would say, that was one of the biggest concerns we heard from families where if elementary was starting that early and we were increasing the distance, now some of the youngest children would be out potentially when it's dark and having to walk further. So I think that, that was the, at least the loudest feedback we heard, cause we were looking at it together, not just, just in walking distance.
Right. I mean, and that's very helpful. I appreciate that. I guess my, my question was more that it seems to me there's a big difference in terms of what you're walking on, if you're walking in Hammergrill, for example, as opposed to Glenmont.
Correct.
You know, or even, even, you know, right at Elsmere, you know, kids are walking and it's not necessarily sort of a nice back road kind of thing. And is that at all considered in when we expand?
So when we did look at that, one of the, we actually had conversations, there's a town's pedestrian committee. We talked with some of the president's council representatives. They were having discussions about, I don't know if some of you remember, walking school bus concept where there's kind of a neighborhood walk where parents help organize kids to walk together so it's safer either going or coming from school. So we're all those conversations. With that said though, in regards to the actual distance, whether there's a sidewalk or it's well lit, doesn't fall into that criteria for what you can deem a safety zone?
Right. And we also had...
If you can, I think Meredith had something she wanted to...
Um, well, one of my questions was, oh, was that Bob? So thank you for bringing that up. I was wondering if, I know you don't have the data now, but if, if you'd come back with the data regarding the percentage of kids at each school that this affects? You know, we're, we're talking about numbers, but I'm thinking it looks like Hammergrill, it looks like that's the whole school district is within a mile. So if you could give us a, a concept of the percentage of kids that that affects?
We can do that. I mean, Hammergrill is the one, just because of its location, it is a, a significant portion of the student body that goes to, or is enrolled in Hammergrill.
Right, right.
Um, and also if, if we are gathering more information, I think we, we do need to all collectively look at the, the types of streets where the kids are walking on. You know, I, I was looking specifically at Eagle, the question of, of whether or not that goes across the bypass or not.
It wouldn't across the hard bypass, but it may, the bypass extension along, along Van Dyke, or the extension up to Adams Street Apartments may, that, that part would not be considered a safety zone, but the actual four lane Route 32 would be.
That's a safety zone or is that past the mile?
It wouldn't be a safety zone.
Okay. But it happens to be past the mile. I couldn't really tell from the...
I think for Eagle, it looked like it was outside, right?
Yeah, I think it's out.
Yeah.
Really, everybody in Eagles got to cross the, you know, the street right by the, right by the high school.
I think yours... John, did you have a question?
Oh, you had one more? One more quick question, which was just in general, I, I think we talked about this two years ago when we brought it up. But maybe perhaps we could discuss it again, is whether or not we can offer any incentives to our families, either financial incentives or I'm not sure exactly how, to not sign up their kids for bus. I mean, there's gotta be, you know...
We tried that at the high school. It didn't work well.
Well, at the high school, we, we said, you know, okay, now you have to, as opposed to offering it every, now you have to actually sign up for it. But I'm wondering, what can we do to incentivize not signing up for it? There are some families that don't need to take the bus. And if we gave them something, um, some reason why not to take the bus, maybe they'd sign up for it. I just would love to have like a brainstorming session about something we could do to incentivize. Cause we either need to add more drivers or take away riders. And maybe there's a voluntary way to take away some of the riders. I just wanted to throw that.
John?
Are crossing guards our school district responsibility or what? They're town employees.
And that, that was one thing, last time when we looked at this, um, the concept, could there be additional crossing guards hired? That I think the town was concerned about doing that. One, their challenge with finding people to do that. But also if, um, the one thing that we found out during some of those discussions was if the crossing guard is not able to come to work, it requires then a police officer to, if they don't have a substitute crossing guard, which I guess they're not plentiful these days, requires a police officer to then, uh, deal with the crossing at that location. And that was a challenge for the town.
I just wonder with, again, some of these more heavily traveled roads, and you've broadened the reach, is that gonna be...
Is there any, yeah. Is there any other like follow-up information that you want that would be helpful that we could bring back?
Catherine?
I'm actually wondering, as we, as we walk this path again, if somebody could reach out to the town and the bike and pedestrian safety committee, or town highway, I'm not certain. But like get a sense of, get a sense of where they're going. The, the town, in my opinion, seems to be doing a very good job of, of updating, improving and expanding our sidewalks. But I clearly remember last time, um, Elsmere and the middle school as well, and Eagle, you know, all being places that folks had a lot of concerns about having kids on the street. I don't, you know, the, the roads are only so wide. I, I get that. But just to have a sense of like, if we were, if we were to go down this path, would the town be willing to work with us to help prioritize some of these areas? And are there any plans in place that we could or should know about that would make this better or worse?
And two reps from that committee did just come to president's council.
Beautiful.
To, um, talk with them about some of the work they're doing. They brought up the Kenwood Avenue work. They're involved in that although, you know, there's other people involved. Yeah. So they have been in touch with the district about some of those things. And we talked about partnering with them to the degree that, I mean, they can only do so much as well. Right.
Julie actually brought up a question I was thinking of, which, you know, we'd
really like to get the high school starting later. Let's assume if we go gump ho and save eight buses by doing elementary middle and up, does that allow us to get to a point where now we can go back and actually have that high school starting live?
No. We actually need, we need at least 70 drivers to consider going back to that time without, um, when we started the high school later, the high, we went to a two-tier system.
Yep.
And the two-tier system actually requires more drivers, which is why we went back to the three-tier system. And in order to go back to two-tier, we need minimum of 70 drivers in order to do that. We had, we started that, we had almost 80 drivers. And it was, so that, um, yeah, that, that's a bigger challenge.
Anybody have any other questions or requests for follow-up information?
Can we get a BOSI's bus driving course set up?
So one of the, just so the board is aware, um, this is a conversation, actually we are having at BOSI's. Um, there is some follow-up discussions through them about if there's any way, and Ellen brought this up in one of the discussions, to do some sharing with other districts. The challenge that presents, like one of the concepts that came up was the possibility, you know, we, we just saw a presentation about we have kids going over to CTE and coming back and forth. Um, and then we also have buses that go to private placements also. So is there any way to share some of that responsibility? So for example, Bethlehem isn't going to CTE and then going to Wildwood or going here and there. And Gilderland's doing the same thing. You know, that's always a challenge because that creates long bus rides. If you're going to one location, transferring kids and trying to go somewhere else. So it's not always ideal. But that's just a concept that came up at BOSI's because other districts are struggling with the, the same issue. So I don't know that there's a great solution, but if there's any way to offset some of the burden that school districts are finding, then I think they're trying to find some
So in terms of additional data points, I just want to make sure that Ellen and I can get folks what they're looking for. Meredith, you were looking for the percent of students impacted as a percentage of student enrollment by school.
And I was hoping for a miracle from the town on sidewalks. See, see what they're doing on this. And just one more, while we're thinking about like different ideas, looking at the high school catchment area, if we go to that larger, is there something that we can partner with CDTA on to get those kids up Delaware Ave? And I'm wondering, same thing at Elsmere. I mean, nobody, I, I haven't seen anybody put their kindergarten or a city bus lately. But maybe we can, you know, whether there's some sort of discount we can offer families or things like that for folks who are in, in that area and could, could hop on the 18, which goes right up Delaware Ave.
Yeah, we looked at CDTA, I think back when we were looking at this for high school kids. And we were trying to work with them to come up with kind of some centralized stops. And I think at the time, I, I don't think they had the drivers either. They couldn't guarantee consistent, consistency of that. But we could certainly revisit that.
Yeah, if, if we could, I mean, the, again, for, at least for those, for those students in the catchment along, along Delaware Ave, um, you know, the bus is there anyway. So can we get discounts or something? Whatever the case may be.
Have we reached out to things like local trucker groups? You know, people already have CDL licenses?
It's part of our recruitment plan, but yes, we have.
Meredith, you?
I, I just wanted to clarify something you said earlier, is that increasing the mileage for the high school and the middle school without increasing the elementary school is not gonna really help us? Is that correct?
The, the, the three are linked, but not necessarily exclusive. So the lar, the mo, the maximum you get for, um, your decrease in buses is at the elementary level because the ridership is this, that much more significant. I think if we went to a mile and a half on the high school, it was one less bus. So you can't, if you're only going to, if you're not going to do the elementary school, you're still gonna need the same number of drivers in the high school, which still puts you up against that 53 number. So you gotta sort of look where your biggest impact is in terms of ridership and decrease in buses, which is at the elementary school level and work forward from there. That, that's why at a mile, or a mile and a half, excuse me, at the high school, that would have to be, excuse me, the recommended for the high school. Because otherwise you're at maybe three buses for the high school. You need the six at the elementary, the three, three buses at the high school is only half of what you really need for the elementary side. Unless the board is okay with a decrease in three and we could do that across the board. But we started this with the most maximum impact of decrease in buses, which translates to the elementary, elementary school moving forward.
No, I was just gonna add in terms of the follow-up with the town. And I think this is obvious, but they, I know that they were taking their consultant's report under advisement in terms of which options they were going to start working on on Kenwood Avenue. And those were the results of like a whole lot of studies about traffic patterns and how many kids were crossing streets when. And particularly impacted is the middle school. So if we're talking about three times as many kids needing to now start crossing all those intersections, I just don't know to what extent it impacts the town's decision to like take out a traffic lane, put in a roundabout, for example. So just as part of the follow-up conversation, I think it would be important to have transparency both ways in terms of if the towns made any decisions and how this could potentially impact the studies that they put together.
Yeah, to, to really micromanage here, can we like email them this presentation and make sure that...
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. now is the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items, A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through five.
Holly, I'm going to request that we take out the Treasury report and consent.
You said number three, the Treasury's report?
Correct.
Okay. So let me restate the motion. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one, two, four, and five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And then it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item number three.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, surprise, surprise. This is just, we've been having an ongoing process of trying to establish how much information we should be getting on various, like, purchase orders and warrants and so on. We're not there yet, and so I'm really at a point where I don't think I can approve, you know, this seventy-eight-page document of unspecified expenses in many cases.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through six.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action item number one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries?
Sorry, guys, I have a quick question. Don't need to interrupt if you, if you need to finish with that process. I'm trying to become a coach, and I was going to wait till the end, but I know that, like, there needs to be some approval from the board. I don't know if we got into that process yet. If I need to wait, I can wait.
We're just at public comment for a non-agenda item.
We're just there, but.
Step right up.
No, I think that.
Can we get a vote on the?
Yeah, we get a vote.
We do. Sorry about that.
Yeah, hold on a second. I just want to make sure that we, Brittany, did we finish? I think we, D, so we are on D, other action items. I gave the vote, you finished the vote on that that carries. Okay. So going back, the coaches were under.
Is that the inters班级 coaching points?
We just had the one.
Did you say girls wrestling?
We just have the wrestling votes. The other winter coaches were already done.
They were already done.
Last meeting, right.
Yes.
So, but just procedurally, we don't take public comment about specific personnel items, right? But next on the agenda is non-agenda, general items. So if you had a general item that was not specific to something we talked about on the agenda.
Or, if it's a personal item, we should be done in hopefully about two minutes. So, if you want to wait a minute and.
Yeah, if that's what you recommend, then I could wait, absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. So again, item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone who wants to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On November twentieth, this coming Monday, at six o'clock, we have a policy committee meeting here at the high school. And then December sixth is our next regular board meeting. Please note that that's at Hammagrail Elementary School. And anticipating that we'll have executive session at six and reconvene at seven to public session. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So?
Executive.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. And if you want to come up and maybe talk to.